United States of America and to the Republic where all is stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Sam. Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Trustee Osoledo?
Here.
Trustee Bartow?
Here.
Trustee Murphy? Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Doctor.
Here.
Okay, great, thank you. So, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? So.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Wigan and seconded by Trustee Anderson. Roll call please. Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Osoledo? Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy? Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Six, zero, one absent. Do we have any community input? Has anything turned in? No. Okay, seeing as there are none, we can skip number five. And we will now move to closed session. The items are conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiator, threat to public services or facilities, and we will return to open session at 10:30. Thank you. And let's see. The Board of Study Session begins at 10:52. And in close, the Board of Education took action to approve a motion to agree to a settlement of claims for compensation in connection with Newport Harbor High School in the amount of $469,310 with always green synthetic grass. And the open session roll call vote, we're going to take a vote. I'm sorry, the vote was six As and one absent. And do we need to do it on the open as well?
No.
Okay, so, thank you very much. We move on to Board Study Session on the Facilities and Maintenance Plan. We do have two public comments, and Trustee Osoledo, could you please read?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board regarding items on the special meeting agenda only. Comments on special meeting items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
Okay, thank you. We will have Chase Reeve, and after Chase Reeve is Dan Sheraldi. You have three minutes.
You want me to just speak from here? Oh, wow, fancy. Hi, I'm Chase Reeve. I'm a parent of two kids at Anderson Elementary, a second grader and a fourth grader. And our facility was built in the 70s and is doing good work as we have like very proficient students and are doing great learning there, but it is in dire need of an upgrade, especially around safety and the learning environment. We have no interior doors, so students can walk through the campus unimpeded, and if anyone was to broach the exterior of the building, they would have access to the full interior. My wife is previously a teacher at Anderson 10 years ago, and in her tenure, Newport Beach Police came out and did an assessment on the school and taught the teachers what to do in a time of, you know, a crisis. And while we now have a perimeter fence, a lot of those interior safeguards haven't been put in place, so I'm hoping that we can take action and put them into place now.
Thank you. Dan Sheraldi?
Hi, my name is Dan Sheraldi. I'm going to reiterate a little bit of what Chase said. I'm also a parent at Anderson Elementary. I have a first grader and then two more little guys coming up through the system. We've not talked a lot in public forums about the safety issues at Anderson for some reasons, but appreciate this opportunity in a somewhat smaller group just to express to this group our concerns around the safety and security of the school. We've had a bunch of engagement, there's pictures in the handout, a bunch of engagement meetings and things with the group, and look forward to having those things moved forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's go ahead. Mr. Trader, if you'd like to begin.
Yes, thank you so much. Great to be here with you today. Today, we're going to have a presentation regarding our master facility plan process, so I'd like to have Auda introduce our architect that has done this.
Hi. Do we?
Sure. Is he going to use screen?
Screen? Screen.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Today, we're here to bring you the presentation for the master plan, which is a culmination of a lot of work across the district, from community members to site staff, custodians, and our architects, and then our internal divisional departments. Brian Leonard is with DLR, an architect in San Diego, and they have done master planning for many districts and are bringing their expertise to our district. We've had great collaboration with a lot of our community meetings and just the site engagement. Brian's going to walk you through the presentation. We do have quite a few slides that are going to be very familiar to all of you, and so there are going to be some slides, just with the consideration of time, that we're going to skip over, but we did want to just have a comprehensive document to leave with everyone just in case they hadn't seen all of the prior presentations. And as soon as we get this loaded, we will get started and lead you through the process. Thank you.
All right. Good.
Thank you.
Are you guys able to hear me? Can I just teach your voice? All right, so we're going to run through a couple of slides, and you know, the first four slides, as you've already seen, it's been a great process for community. The process, we ran through the facility conditions assessment, just to recap real quick. We did community outreach, both via survey online and also in person, where we had a chance with the Anderson team to talk through all the different campuses, and we've been working in earnest on the master plan. And then, we're going to present a little bit of the results of that master planning and community outreach process today, and then we'll finish with the website that allows us to do surveys as well. There's some photos from the assessments, which you've already seen, and then we did an engagement process. We reviewed this with you, you know, we had five different nights. The alternative event was one additional night that we added, but they were all by high school attendance factory, so that people could participate in multiple campuses on the same evening for convenience. So here's some photos from the engagement sessions. We had a really great format where we had each campus board print it out, and it allowed people to highlight specific things that they were concerned about on the campuses with docs to locate it, and also to provide comments that ranged on, hey, this is something that we love, to, hey, this is something we're not a fan of, and we approved that. And so, we had some really great turnout on multiple evenings, and we got feedback on every campus. Now, the way that feedback is going to be reported back to you and all of your community members is actually we've translated all of those sticky notes and all the stuff that people like to engage with by hand, and translated it onto the website itself. So you'll see for each campus, this is just a little screenshot that we took of one of the campuses, and it shows how each comment was translated and put into the website. So that way, all of that is kind of ratified and connected and put into each campus page, and so people can go see what the comments were, and then hopefully see how other comments were responded to with the master plan that was produced. So that was the end person. We also had a survey process that we went through that was a really great track. We had almost 1,000 survey responses for your community, and this is just a basis of the breakdown of the types of folks that responded. The survey itself, and I'll show you more detailed information about the questions, and this is going to be really important as we start to suggest an idea of how you can start to evaluate future projects. The survey is a very useful tool for that purpose. So we asked about 10 different categories, and we'll show you another slide with a detailed breakdown of each of those questions, but it allowed people to respond in two different ways. Number one, how important is this category to you? And then, on the basis of their campus that they were responding to, what is your opinion of the quality of this category at the campus today? So it gives you a sense of what their opinion of those categories are, and also how important it is for future prioritization. So here's a detailed breakdown of each of the questions, which you can have for reference. I'm not going to read through this, but it's a great worksheet for all of you that have the printouts, to be able to read through that in more detail, and this will be a useful way for understanding different categories of improvements that you can start to prioritize in future. But the results of the survey are interesting, and you know, the categories on the left are showing how important is that category to you, and then the responses on the right, the pink and purple, are showing what is your opinion of the current condition of those categories. We have all this information that can be broken down by campus as well, so there's a wealth of information available to you as you want to look at that, and all of that is transparently put on the website when it's completed as well. So just looking at some of the top five categories on the left, like how important is it? Outdoor spaces, definitely scores high. Campus safety and security scores high. The renovation of your permanent structures, and then specialized programs, especially at the elementary school, all scored really, really high. And then, people's opinion about the current conditions of different facilities. The lowest scoring were obviously the portable, so the intervals, the condition of your permanent buildings, food service, and then at the very bottom of the course were 2.6 is the elementary and middle school NPRs, which is no surprise because there's work planned for this in the future. Now, the master plan itself has a lot, there's just a lot of information to go through. So we thought we'd summarize it with some basic infographics to give you a sense for the full breadth of work that is needed to be planned for in the next 34 years. The total cost for all work, now, you know, this seems like a big number, but when you look at things over the course of 30-plus years, it's not actually as significant. It's a lot of larger school districts, it would be about $2.5 billion worth of work to bring your campuses fully up to snuff when you look at bringing every campus up to where you want it to be. You have 38 total properties, and then some interesting details. The average date of the original construction of many of your campuses, books it right at 1960. So if you, you know, gauge that, the age of most of your campuses is right around 60 to 65 years old, which is actually pretty old compared to a lot of school districts. You have $2.5 billion square feet of buildings, and 8.4 million square feet of green space. That's a lot of green space, actually, and it's actually one of the, in my opinion, after doing the assessments, one of the most beautiful things about your campuses is the green space, the trees, and the vegetation. Your oldest school was built in 1994. I discovered it. That's Newport Elementary. And the newest campus that you have was built 25 years ago. So as we look at, if you'll see with the website later, you'll see a whole host of costs associated with different improvements by different categories. So as we look at the categories that were proposed, the biggest number by far is the permanent building renovation, parking in about $900 million. And then outdoor spaces, athletic spaces, athletic facilities is about $500 million. Portable replacements, about $400. Now, one context I want to provide a little bit to these numbers is this is just a snapshot of time, like if you were to attempt everything today, right now, it's totally not reasonable. Even if you had the money, your staff, there's no way that you could implement all those projects, so it's intended that you would take a little bit of time and go that way. But this slide is really helpful to provide context of, you know, where are the most significant costs in your district and what types of facilities? So this is a helpful breakdown, and then the two categories that were both important to the community also score in the most costly categories, which are permanent renovations and outdoor spaces. All right, so while that's a lot of information, a lot of data about the results of the initial master planning study, what we wanted to do was kind of give an outline of the different approaches that we're going to be taking with different types of schools. So we're going to look at elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, and a lot of the types of interventions that we're suggesting for each of your campuses can be summarized into different types of things that you'll want to do. The community will understand things in types of like site access and building safety and such, but these are like almost themes that were consistently seen across your schools because of their age when they were designed, and the types of things that you'll want to do as far as interventions to bring them up to code. So a consistent theme, for instance, is kinder and TK expansion. You know, the state has added TK as a full grade level, which is causing challenges statewide, and so your district is no different in the sense that you have to accommodate those facilities and those new students on your campuses today. Those come with a host of challenges because they require access to outdoor space, those students require adjacent bathroom facilities, and a whole host of other needs. So a TK and kinder expansion is pretty consistent across all of your elementary schools. There's a need for outdoor play and outdoor learning, and that's really strategically a way to take the outdoor spaces that are awesome already and make them strategically effective for your outdoor learning as well. Restrooms are all aging and non-ADA compliant. There are modernizations that you've done recently and in the past that are up to code, but there's a lot, there's a consistent theme of restroom improvements that are required. Site access is probably one of the first things that I noticed when we were assessing your campuses, because a lot of your schools were designed in late 50s, early 60s, when students walked to school, and there wasn't a whole host of student support programs, not a huge presence of counselors, not a huge presence of, you know, psych and speech therapy, and all of those services require space. And so your schools have really small admins as a result of that. They're about half the size of what they would normally be if we designed a school today. And the site access has a real deficiency part, and because students were intended to walk and not to be dropped off, you have really small parking lots that are creating traffic jams and all sorts of safety issues. So site access is a big issue. There's been a huge request for shade structures, which could be, you know, implemented, either trees or formal shade structures, and like I mentioned, an undersized admin building. The admin and the NPR on a lot of your elementary school campuses are very consistent in their size and their age, and so there is a need to look at a coordinated approach for most of your campuses on how to increase the size of your admin, and NPRs today are, you look at them differently. A lot of your food service is happening through the NPR, so you'll have like a window in the NPR, and this facility is aging significantly, and so the amount of things that you can do in an NPR is pretty limited because of that arrangement. Normally today, we would design surgery adjacent to it that would allow students to cycle through, and then the NPR could be used in tandem as well. And so there's some improvements and some strategies we'll need to take on the approach to handling the admins and NPRs. So here's an example on Polareno campus, Polareno Elementary, and so we're showing one of the two options. You'll see oftentimes multiple options for each site that give you an approach depending on the amount of cost that you want to take and whether or not you want to do a more aggressive replacement. In this instance, on Polareno, we're showing at the main entrance an expanded parking lot at the bottom, and as a result of that, pushing the admin and NPR as new construction back. And so what that does, it solves both the NPR and admin as aging facilities as an issue. It also solves providing better site access and providing better parking, and then as a result of that, we're also comprehensively increasing student safety. And so that's how that starts to play out. You'll see that as a pretty consistent theme on multiple elementary school campuses. And then what you'll also note is in the back, we're showing what we call portable to permanent construction. And so as an effort for every master plan, we're going to show if you were to replace all of your portables that you have today with permanent construction, where would that construction go? And the whole idea is to provide you a roadmap so that if you chose to do those projects later, you would put something in that place today as an interim. We want to make sure that you have a comprehensive approach so that in 30 years or 40 years down the road, hopefully when you complete all these improvements, that nothing invalidates something that happens later. Any questions so far? I notice a lot of information. It's promising.
This is based on a 30-year plan, then?
Yes, at least 30 years. We oftentimes see, you know, with the scope and scale of what you would need to do, it would be really challenging to...
Can you hear me? No? It would be really challenging to do all of this all at once, and you know, unless you're like Los Angeles Unified or San Diego Unified, where you could pass a $2 or $3 billion bond, it's just not really feasible. Also, the nature of these interventions, you can sometimes take a cohesive, like a complete approach to a whole-site modernization, but it's really disruptive to students, and so oftentimes we'll see campuses take on, you know, certain portions of scope at one time, or just rip the Band-Aid and just do all of it at once, but it requires oftentimes students to be relocated, or additional costs in our housing to be expended. But yes, it's a 30-year, 30-year approach. All right, transitioning to middle and high school. So what are the themes of middle and high schools? You've got two formal, or I should say dedicated middle schools and four high schools, and two of those high schools have middle school enclaves on them, so we kind of grouped them together. They too have site access issues and aging restrooms, the same as the elementary schools, but they also have, you know, some of them have older campuses or aging facilities. You know, middle schools and high schools are notorious for the amount of wear and tear that the older students give to them, so even if you, it might not be as old of a campus as an elementary school, sometimes they just get it used a lot more. So that was observed. There's code updates and modernizations that will be required, including retrofits and structural upgrades. Restrooms are the same issue, and when we look at improving outdoor socialization, we notice that a lot of your campuses are based on what we, architects call finger plan, so you've got your buildings kind of in rows with those in-between spaces. The elementary schools have similar things. Elementary schools, it's a little easier to accommodate that plan, but for, you know, older students, the socialization becomes important, so if you can create quads and spaces that provide a variety of student interactions, it's better with socialization, and then if they're placed in the right spot, they can be used for educational purposes as well. So that was a theme that I think could be improved across all of your middle school and high school campuses as well. And then lastly, improving athletics. You know, a lot of your high school campuses especially have a limited area for a host of athletic programs that you're currently hosting, so there's some challenges with the athletic programs as well. So if we look at the middle schools, here's Ensen, and it shows with the light teal is kind of a light modernization, and the purple color is more of a heavy modernization, and the orange is showing new construction. You can see the portable replacement happening on the right side with the potential, we have two options for a parking lot on the end, one with and one without, depending on how that goes, but you can see that there's extensive need for heavy renovations in the NPR and food service, and all the green areas are showing improved outdoor socialization areas, areas that we flagged that can be improved to better support student life and educational outcomes. There's a whole host of utility issues on site, and that's part of the modernization effort, you know, to deal with poor drainage, failing utility systems, and you know, as you look out 10 to 15 years, those systems are going to only get older, and so we flag each of those as separate costs. And then you'll see as far as athletics, just, you know, expanding that field, for instance, to support CIF soccer field, for example, and expanding the track just a little bit, and those are all based on community comments and requests as well. When we look at high schools, this is Costa Mesa High School, showing a potential approach to improvements. On Costa Mesa, we actually have, it's kind of like the three barriers, we have a light approach that's just modernization, we have a half-modernized, half-replacement, and this is showing a high school with a full replacement. What's interesting about this, most people will note, that it seems like the building footprints are a lot smaller, and how is that possible if we're getting the same area? Well, that's because we're proposing multi-story construction, and the benefit to the multi-story construction is fantastic because you get more open space to work with. All right, student safety. So, you know, the Okayak report that we received talks about a whole host of things, and we're folding that into the master plan currently. Specific items that will be addressed and tracked through the master plan website will include surveillance and active monitoring, door locks and hardware, which are things that would naturally be applied to any modernization effort. So you would, if you're doing a modernization, you have to replace the door locks to make them lockable from the interior by a state law. So that is just going to be a natural part of all the improvements that you make in the future. We also listed lobby security, bollards, providing secure entrance, appropriate line of sight, and fencing. They also have a whole host of procedural recommendations as well. So here's a lot of data, right? Here's a lot of projects, a lot of costs, and so the question becomes, how do you choose which projects to do? And you know, unfortunately, I can't tell you that, but I can give you some ideas about how to look at it that may be constructive, and we had a lot of discussion internally. Auda and Jeff and their teams and I have been having a lot of discussion about what is a rationale based on the input and data that we've received that you can start to consider and evaluate the projects as they come. So the first place that we looked was actually in the vision statement and goals of your own entity of the Board. So we folded these from your website, the four goals of improving academic achievement, focusing on early literacy, and the expansion of learning opportunities. So I folded kind of key takeaways. You've also got through item two, the whole child, expanding whole child support, and those are probably the two most easily applied concepts. Items three and four, I think we're already doing, because you hired me and we went through an outreach process, right? So we did a full community engagement process and we're producing the master plan. So as we look at items one and two, we're going to put that in the left category and say, hey, those are prioritization categories, and how... And how might we expand those ideas into a useful way of looking at the categories that translate that, those goals, into something that is more of a district perspective? And then on the right, we're going to look at community feedback that we received through the surveys and through the campus input. So I'll talk a little bit about the right. So the community feedback, we've got a ton of data, right, about how important the category is and also their opinion or their observations about how those categories are faring. But on the left, we've got four, we'll call them buckets, styles of looking at things that include site safety, critical infrastructure, program requirements and program enhancements.
So I'll talk a little bit about the prioritization. Once we have identified all of our need in the master plan, we're charged with making recommendations to the board of which projects should be prioritized and occur first. And so we've looked at what's important. We know that site safety is, you know, critical, has to be addressed and has to be considered. And so regardless of the type of the project, on the prior slide, as we saw some of the different goals of safety, as we look at projects, whether it's a building or it's a ball field, we're going to see how do we incorporate baller into this project? How do we incorporate window tinting or whatever those items are? So when we're looking at projects and we define what the need is based off of these priorities, site safety is obviously number one. And critical infrastructure, they kind of go hand in hand. So you'll see on the next slide, critical infrastructure to us is if something fails, can we still do our job or not, right? And so there's things like central kitchen has to operate, transportation, so we'll look at those a little bit more. And then program requirements, it's always evolving. So in order to understand what we need in a classroom or athletics, you know, if we don't have that support in a facility, then it makes it harder for teachers to do their jobs. Example of that for program requirements in the athletics arena, beach volleyball, that's a new CIF sport. We have some sand courts, but we don't have them across the board for all of the sites. And so we're trying to balance that. So if a site doesn't have something that it requires because that program is served at that site, that's something that we'll consider when we're prioritizing, going to make a recommendation to the board. Program enhancements goes right along with just the program requirements. There are things even, well, evolving programs like in the classroom for the TK expansion that we're working on now to provide classrooms. And there's just general growth that also occurs. And just what the needs are even outside of the classroom. So one of our big district needs, storage, everybody needs storage. And when we're developing a classroom to teach students in, it also needs support facilities as well. So we'll look at those to make sure that we have a comprehensive project, which tends to take us a little longer to accomplish, but important when we're making recommendations to the board based off of our analysis. And the master plan is going to be basically our guide to do everything we do now. So what we wanted to do is take all of this information and kind of frame it into what are we doing now and how are we going to move forward? And then at the end of this, and I'm going to try to go through this quickly so we have enough time, but at the end of this, Brian is going to walk you through the master plan website and just show you a couple of features of it because it will be live for everybody else to see. So we want to make sure we understand what's out there. So this is a list of our current projects and we've identified them as the critical and then general improvements. So as I was mentioning, you know, briefly before, district-wide safety, we're going to incorporate every aspect of that that we can when a project moves forward, whether it's related scope or not, it just has to make sense. Central kitchen, Todd, do you need a kitchen? So we know that we have really old facilities in the central kitchen. Their walk-in freezer and refrigeration boxes are ready to go. I don't know how they're still working, but they are. So and the CNG, so providing a CNG infrastructure. We have a CNG station now, but the compressors that we have now are also dated and need to be replaced. And then there's an expansion to that because as our CNG service expanded, we needed to expand the services as well. So we're working on that type of project. The rest of these, which I won't go through all of them, we can, we can talk about this in more detail as needed, but these are all the projects that we have brought to the board for approval in some fashion, whether it was a conceptual approval with a small design budget or we're in construction because as you can see, we have the theater on this list. So these are our current projects that we're working on utilizing that prioritization. And then what we're doing here is we're comparing it to the feedback that we've received from the survey and the community engagement on the right side where you see the community feedback. So...
And just one detail about that is the columns on the left in that purple category are the higher scoring categories where the category or the columns on the right are lower scoring. So strategically, you want to make sure that you have more boxes being checked on the left side rather than the right. And I think it's encouraging to note that most of the projects that you have proposed are scoring pretty high on the community criteria list.
Thank you. So what we're doing here is we are just creating a scenario. This has not been presented to the board or acted on, but this is just a scenario where we have identified high school improvements and elementary school improvements. And so what we're showing here is a tiered approach in order to be able to accomplish a big task of high school renovation. And so what you're seeing here on the first section where we have portable to permanent replacement, what we're doing is we're trying to identify school sites that have the majority of classrooms in portable classrooms in order to be able to move those portable classrooms and build permanent construction and then build our own inventory of interim housing for any major construction projects at the high schools. Interim housing and leasing is extremely expensive. And so we're trying to use the benefit of our own assets that we have and provide permanent construction at these elementary schools that have had portables for quite a long time. So this is just a scenario that we've looked at and approach that we've considered.
So, you know, as far as it comes to sequencing, you know, we have a whole host of tools now for evaluating projects. We have different planned projects shown on the left. And so the question of, you know, what comes next is something that hopefully we'll be able to review together with you and your team. And those would include, you know, the categories of site safety, critical infrastructure, the program requirements and of course program enhancements. And so, you know, there's a whole, a bunch of different ways that you could take to evaluate your projects in the future. You can do projects similar in theme to like the AV improvements that you have at the NPRs where you say, we're going to improve all of the NPRs with these consistently across all campuses and choose a high priority category that's scored high by the community. And you can implement them in waves in that fashion. Or you can also take the approach of, hey, we're going to, you know, take on, you know, one campus at a time and do comprehensive improvements and whole-site modernizations for each of those campuses in sequence and make sure that each of those projects hits on all of the really key, you know, priorities of both the board and the community and just take them in parts and pieces. So that's an approach that you could take. Fortunately, we've got all of the data to help you and empower you in your decision-making process and establishing what you want to state as what the criteria for future improvement should be. And then we can help put together a timeline for things in the future.
So real quick before he moves on, if you'll see the fine print is what we should all really be paying attention to because it does say 10-year implementation even for these projects, although they are all on our radar now, there are things like district-wide safety that you can't accomplish all that, you know, in one year or two years. And so we're just identifying that this will take a little bit of time here, but a lot of these have been made priorities already.
I'm going to switch over to the website. So we have a draft version of the website and I'm just going to go through a list of the features. You're going to find that as far as websites go, this is very data-rich. So it's not uncommon, especially for board members, to kind of get lost in their master plan sites because there's so much really good data about your campuses, about your community, about your goals. And so it's really fun. I encourage you, once you get access to it, to read through it and engage with it. The other thing I will stress is that this is a dynamic thing. So, you know, master plans, when I first started working as an architect, were these printed things and they were like set in stone for that one period of time. And you would update them, you know, like roughly every 10 years. And the costs, you know, if you did your master plan five years ago, you have costs from five years ago and it's like, I don't know how much I could trust that. With the website, we can, it's really easy to actually update this thing on an annual basis on cost and on scope. As your priorities change, you can also change the master plan like the plans themselves. And so it's a dynamic thing that you can be constantly evolving and updating as you go. The other thing that's really great about it is because it's web-based, it's super transparent. So everybody can see it. If you want to look at the Anderson Elementary School site, everybody has access to what's planned and what is proposed from that site. So, you know, it's kind of a snapshot. And then you'll see even with pricing, these are, there's a lot of variables that impact pricing. And so I'll show you kind of roughly how those work. Am I doing on time? All right. So the main page has a whole host of categories where you can learn more about Newport Mesa, why the master plan's been created, talks a little bit about community engagement, design guidelines, and then of course summary of the master plan itself. All of this data can be kind of cut and spliced and looked at in different ways. I was just going to show you an example of the master plan cost analysis. There is so much data that we have available to us through census data. For instance, you know, we have modernization eligibility. We have the survey responses, which you can look at and filter by school or by responding group. If you want to see what parents say as opposed to students. And we also have, you know, socio-economically disadvantaged information that we pulled from the census data that serves to talk about what's the makeup of your students on each campus, which is really helpful information as you consider things from that perspective. But as we look down at the cost, what I want to emphasize is that you can pick a project or a different category of projects. So let's say we want to look at, you know, major modernizations campus-wide or district-wide. And let's say we're going to plan to construct them in six years. You'll see that everything adjusts dynamically so that you can start to say, well, you know, we don't want to do this type of project until, you know, maybe that's going to be 10 years from now. Or you can look at what that cost will be in real time. You can, you know, make assumptions that you want about annual escalation. And then if you want to carry specific contingencies in your budget, you can as well. So you can also, since we went to the trouble of surveying people, you can also filter by the community focus. So all the things that score highly, if you want to look at, you know, permanent building renovations as well, you can filter by that as well. And so then it will show you a list of projects by campus and their associated costs, including hard costs, soft costs, their escalation contingency, all broken out. So again, it's really data-rich and it allows you, as you're evaluating projects or initiatives that you want to take, you can have actual data to help you in your planning, which we've learned is really helpful for school districts as they're making, you know, big comprehensive decisions. All right, so let's look at, you know, a specific elementary campus. So this is the Whittier Elementary School page, just an example. It's got a whole host of information on it. Every campus has the same information. We've got community feedback. We can look at what did the respondents of that specific campus prioritize? We've got student demographics again for that specific campus, their eligibility. And then of course we have the formal proposed master plans. And so you'll see that there's two different options for this campus. And this is one of those, for instance, that we flagged with a large number of portables onsite that could be replaced with permanent construction. And there's two different options. So here's the option that shows just a renovation, expansion of the admin, a modernization of the NPR. And then the other one shows the, just the replacement. We also have a scenario builder. So this is a little more interactive, which allows you to see the costs associated with each of the proposed projects. And you can build that simply by, you know, a project, say, I want to do that one. And as the scenario builder goes, it allows you to see what the cost is and you can do the same approach, years of construction, escalation, so on and so forth. You can also add other projects to it if you want to build your own palette of things that you want to do. I want to do those three projects and what is that cost? And it'll tell you. So this is a really powerful tool for just getting a sense for, hey, if we just wanted to do, you know, site safety, let's do that and what is that cost? And it'll tell you very quickly. We also have the same for the high school, Corona del Mar, for instance, with its information and its scenario builders as well. And this shows, you know, the light or an approach for just modernization. We've got an option for a partial modernization, partial replacement, and then of course full replacement. And this is really just to empower you with a whole host of comprehensive information so that you can make the best decisions for you and your students.
So I just wanted to say, this is the same website that internal staff is going to be using. There isn't anything different about what we're going to be engaging with and that the community's going to be seeing. So that's, that's nice to know that we're all looking at the same thing as we're developing these projects. So I just want to talk about next steps and then if there are any questions, we can answer those from the board. So our next step is to launch this, the website. We have, the principals will all be receiving the website and their individual plans as to what their master plan looks like after having given us all their input. And we will also have a follow-up survey as it relates to the master plan, once it's been received by everybody and reviewed by everybody. We'll be establishing that survey. And then we are going to ask the board to accept the master plan as essentially complete, meaning the work that our architect has done on it. It's a living document. Facilities is going to maintain it with some support from others, but we are going to maintain this and use this as our guide to developing projects moving forward. So super valuable to us. I've been dying for a master plan in this district 20 years now. So, you know, it's one of those things, it was your goal, but it was my goal too. So thank you.
It was their goal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, we're really happy about this. It's just a nice document to be able to look to, to guide us. And so I think it's super valuable for the work put into it.
And facility staff would welcome walking the board through individually if you'd like some time to help navigate through that.
Absolutely, absolutely. As well as staff or anyone can call us and we'll help. So we're here for any questions the board has.
Can I add one more detail? So, you know, we will be making our web developer available to make changes in the future. So it doesn't mean that the website is like stagnant, stuck in stone. So like you will continue to have access and ability to edit and influence the master plan.
So I will tell you, I find myself seeing or hearing this quite often, which we've never done that before in a state, well, in Newport Mesa. So we've asked for some changes already, the way I've wanted to look at like interim housing. And so they're going to work with us on those changes. Very flexible to our needs.
Okay. Well, Tracy, if we don't have the little light up board, so just raise your hand and then, Justin Pearson?
Yes. Since we have decided that safety is going to be one of our top issues and quite honestly the most important issue for our schools, then where does that leave Anderson in this, in this thing? When their school really doesn't even have doors to put door locks on, where does that put us, where does that put Anderson in this process?
So we haven't, we haven't gone through the entire district to establish those prioritizations. We've only done one sequence so far, just as an opportunity. We've only done one sequence so far, just as an opportunity to see how it could look. But we will definitely be going through that process and be making recommendations and considering funding and, and all those other things. But if you were asking me personally, it's high on the list. But that's something that we will bring collectively as a recommendation to the board for a decision on that one in particular. And, and others like it, like Lincoln has, shares some of the same attributes.
I would add that per this, if it meets the board's approval, safety is a number one bucket. And so anything that lands in that bucket is one of the top priorities.
I agree.
And you have put doors and walls in.
We have.
You have put doors and walls at Lincoln. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. Yeah. It's a huge difference.
We had three-year-olds in the ABA program for special ed. And so we put in some doors and we're looking at if we need to do anything similar to that for summer, summer school where they have additional classes.
And we did do quite a bit analysis on Anderson as well, the district's request.
Second stage.
Yeah. It's a, it is something that's gotten a lot of scrutiny and is going to be part of the master plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm Michelle Astor. Can you ask Michelle my question? Tracy Murphy, have a question?
No. Okay. I thought you had to go. Yeah, for the, as we're going through those and their safety-related and then other pieces, what is the timeline for completing those projects? Like is, this is our initial piece, we're able to review it on there. Is that in six months, are we coming back? In a month, are we coming back? What are we making those determinations?
So considering that we are going to bring the master plan back to you for acceptance, I would expect in, or in March, May, that we could have a group of proposed projects with you sequencing and scheduling for your consideration. So, and then funding, you know, where the funding's going to, how the funding's going to be provided. So it's kind of a balancing act right now. But I would say that by May, we could bring something forward to the board for consideration, understanding all the different needs that we've identified.
Okay. Anyone else?
I want to make some comments. First of all, thank you for taking on this massive project. And I know that when I first got on the board, that was one of our priorities before that we set forth. And it's daunting because if you look at these numbers, my gosh, $2.5 billion to achieve this, you know, this price tag. But you know what? It's not a surprise. It's daunting, but not a surprise because we do have so much, so much, I mean, we're a vast district, you know, 2.5 million existing buildings, square feet, 8.5 million square feet of green space, et cetera, et cetera. And the average building being, what, built in the 60s. So yeah, lots to do. So thank you for, for doing the legwork and thank you for your.
My team, my team did it all.
Where are you all? Thank you, truly.
I believe it.
And of course, more work ahead, right? Because the work now needs to get done.
And the website's incredible. Thank you. It's so awesome.
So speaking of the website, like one of my questions is, so what is your target launch date for the website? So, and then I'm sure we have, we're going to have some sort of marketing campaign?
Yeah, typically the, the websites are launched when you approve a master plan. So what that does is it gives you a chance to, to look at it and make sure that you're comfortable with the approach. We've still got some minor updates that we're working with the facilities team to, to get implemented. But it's pretty much there. It's just a matter of making sure that it's accurate, accurately reflecting everything you want it to. And again, it doesn't mean that things can't be changed on it. It's just at some point, you gotta, you gotta get, say yes, it's, it's ready to go. And then on that board night, typically it's published. And at that time, the survey will be live on the website as well. And so as people engage with it, they'll be able to not only see their campuses, but they'll see a survey invitation that will be campus-specific and will give them an opportunity to give their opinion on the different projects proposed on each campus, which will be an additional dataset for you to use in your prioritizing projects.
So I'll just say, it doesn't have to be that though. I mean, if we decide that there is a, a date that we want it, you know, completely live to everybody, it's whatever it needs to be. So there isn't anything really prohibiting us from doing that. I think it's just to make sure that we've met the goals and responded to the ask. And if that's the case, then we, it can be live to everybody.
So, okay, a couple more things. 10-year implementation plan. I know that some, some of these projects are already in progress.
Correct.
So we're actually.
Correct. So we, the master plan is comprehensive of everything that we know we're working on and everything we need. And really, I didn't think it did us any service to not acknowledge those as part of the master plan and be able to check them off as completed. And so we're identifying all of our current projects because they are also on the master plan. And by, you know, next year and next year, we'll already have, have accomplished some of these things. And we, and our master plan will reflect that.
Okay. And then to be clear, so these 83 portables that were listed, they, the report shows that it's a $15 million in savings?
Of leasing, of relocatable leasing costs. The leasing of relocatables is extremely expensive, which you'll see that we were fortunate now of when we're doing work, we bought some relocatables from Huntington Beach City School District in order to, to accommodate our need for our summer expansion that we're doing. And then we were able to purchase some. But leasing over a, you're going to buy them five times over, over a five or seven-year period, maybe three times over, over a seven-year period. But, so we're trying to eliminate that leasing cost and just have the benefit of utilizing our assets that we already have.
To, to give you a sense of the magnitude of that cost, is the savings that you have would pay probably for one of your classroom building constructions. It's about the same. So it's, it's a huge sum.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So next, then we move on to B, Board Study Session on the 2024 to 2025 Budget. Mr. Trader?
All right. So I'm going to come around because the, this is like gold for us to be with you, have this time with you. And so I don't want to miss anything because the really important part is not so much what I say, but what you say. So I think maybe this might, will that come up? There we go. There we go. All right. So let's talk about a little bit of a financing plan. Here we have this all, this great facilities master plan. And, and we need some way to figure that out. And the great thing is, is we have fairly good asset value growth. So it ranges, you can see there at the lower bottom, about 4% to 6%. That's really good. And when you look at your geo-bond tax rate burden, we're at the very bottom. There, we're third lowest in the county. I'm sorry, you have that in your packet?
Oh yeah. Because it said for item one, the facilities and then the master plan. And we did facilities but not master. Are we doing?
So we're doing the financing plan. There should be a, in your packet says, says, here we go. Should be three, three separate, in the wrong packet here. Right. We will get to the maintenance plan. Yeah. It's, it's included in the budget. Okay. So then, so bottom of the rung there, the county median's $30.85 per 100,000. And if, this is just a, just a scenario for you, assuming a four and a half percent AV growth, you could get to, how you say, do a general obligation bond that would raise the tax burden to $30 to the county median, $30 per 100,000. And you could get 295 million out of that with just current interest bonds. If you were to assume a five and a half percent, five and a half, five and a half percent growth, you could get 395 million. And then there's other ways of financing things. There's things called a certific, certificates of participation. And those are essentially just a loan with a private placement. And you could get about $100 million out of that at a true interest cost of between 3.63% and 3.94%. And then you can see a history of geo-bond elections and the, and the performance there. And here's a, just a kind of a potential timeline or, or process where we go through a feasibility study, a consensus, building a strong major and advocacy campaign. That's kind of the process that we follow. The key there is the bottom of that slide is we would have to take action by August 9th. That's something that, that the board chose to do for this next election cycle. And you see here, here's a, kind of a timeline there that we'd have to do to be able to make that and the things we'd have to do to do that. So just a reflection on, on any thoughts about this that you want me to capture?
If we were to choose, let's say, the COP path, do, because it's a loan process, we were pre-qualified? It shouldn't be an issue of being pre-qualified?
Yes. Yes. The district has a very high credit rating. And so there would be no issue there. You'd have people lining up to lend money to you.
Okay. Good to know.
But that, it looks like it on the slide, the downside of that is it burdens the general fund. So if there was to be something that happened in five years, if there was a recession, any of those things, it would be a negative for us.
Yes. Essentially, it raises our fixed costs. So it's first in, first out. We would, that's an obligation. We would have to cover no matter what. And so the board could afford about $6 million a year to prepare COP debt.
It looks like it's a couch of 100 million, is that?
That's what you get with about $6 million a year.
Okay. Because, we're looking at 2.5 billion.
Okay. All right. Let's talk about some budget considerations. So our 20, let's, let's start, let's get in the wayback machine here and look at what we did last, or actually essentially this year. This is where we were in terms of March of last year. And this is what you, what we had decided that we were going to do. And so you see all the things there that we were set to do and that we have done in terms of, you can see there ways to funding, science camp, the field trip core, you know, all these things. And so a lot of great stuff has been happening. It's been really good. And we've been able to follow through on, on all of that you've asked us to do. But now, looking at our current budget environment, we know the state is physically, physically, they're distressed. They really are. And, and we know that community schools, universal mills, cash deferrals, ELOP, those things are on the chopping block. And we're just not sure where, where the state's going to end up, but we know they're at risk. And so knowing that, we, we have a mindset here. Dr. Smith has really encouraged us to, you know, when we look at program, we look at doing extra things, that we, we look at, hey, we try to fit that into a net-zero FTE growth mindset, right? What can we do differently? How can we do it differently? How can we achieve a net-zero FTE mindset? So we're looking at it from that perspective. And then of course, this is a year where we want to maintain reserves and maintain program because the state's coming for it. So we want to maintain it. And then we want to focus on impact. Dr. Smith has been really, really serious about us focusing, well, what's the impact? If we're going to do something, is it going to get us to solving, to resolving a board's priority, your priority? And so we're really focused on the impact. And so looking at that now, we, we look at oversight and commitments. So, you know, we're following all the certifications that we have to make. And then we have commitments, the board, we, we have commitments and we, and some of the interesting things here, which we're following through on, is the Irvine Company, Irvine Company Endowment. This year, you could take $600,000 out of that fund. That's available to do. So $600,000 out of the Irvine Company Endowment Fund that is available to use. Measure F, we're moving forward on that with the theater. We're going to talk to you about routine restricted maintenance. And we're, you're over and above the economic reserve requirement, which is helpful because we're community-funded, we have a cash drive period, and we know the state most likely going to implement cash deferrals, which means we need to have the cash to be able to operate. And they are going to take our cash. And so July through December will be an interesting period for us. And so because we have those reserves, we're going to be able to do, we're not going to have to go to the, the money changers and, and get a very expensive loan to keep our, keep us operating and solid. And then we're also meeting our commitment with our other post-employment benefits for our employees. So when we look at this year's area of focus, so there's an ask here. And so let's talk about, and Ms. Shields will talk about fantastic, we're in Title I Instruction Block.
One of the things per the board's direction that we've been focused on, of course, is early literacy and learning, returning to pre-pandemic levels of academic instruction. And one of the asks this year is to be able to invest in additional specialists so that we could have a stronger instructional block focusing on the Title I schools. That would allow for longer periods of uninterrupted time and allow for deeper instructional time on core subjects and we believe would be a direct impact on student ability, student scores, student outcomes.
And then?
Yes?
Mr. Torrance?
Yes. So the board has given us direction to continue to focus on fortifying our campus safety and finding new ways to ensure that our sites and staff and students continue to maintain safety. And so we are looking for the board's support to continue our campus safety facilitator program. We've added additional campus safety facilitators at several of our sites. As we've done site walks with principals and we've had conversations with the sites, just ensuring that we can continue to shore up student supervision. So we're asking for the board's support in the ongoing, ongoing efforts there. Additionally, we have been working on our alternative education programs for the last two years. The board has supported generously the redesign and refocus of Back Bay High School in Montevista. Most recently, you'll remember that Montevista was moved from Back Bay to our Presidio Learning Center, just behind Davis and Costa Mesa. And we have about 200 students that are absolutely thriving there, which is wonderful. So we've doubled our enrollment in that program due to that change. And what we'd like to see this year, as we move forward into 2024, is just adding additional teachers to be able to support some of our students who have unique learning needs, such as our special education students who would thrive in that setting, and our English learners as well. So you will see a request come forward for funding to be able to support those positions.
And let's talk about information technology. That's a world that's really ever-changing. And we, we take a look at our, our practices and what we're doing there. And we've, we're done, we're doing an audit in that regard. And we expect that through that audit, we will have some recommendations regarding the structure of our staffing. That doesn't necessarily mean more staffing, but it means perhaps a restructure so that we can really better support our sites with the information technology that we have going on. And then we have some special ed supports.
We can speak to those as well. Really, in, we were discussing the effort that Dr. Smith has brought to the district in terms of having a unified vision for high-quality instruction and standardized kind of services and, and understanding across the district at all schools. And one of them is making sure we're integrated with special education and general education and that all teachers, including special education teachers, feel supported in delivering the highest quality of instruction. So we'd be asking for support and making sure that they also have access to. So we'd be asking for support and making sure that they also have access to high-quality professional development and professional learning experiences.
And increased collaboration with our gen ed partners.
Okay, so moving on to Prop 28. Are there any questions or anyone stop for a minute and talk about that last slide?
Do we have any numbers associated to these asks?
We do.
Can we, can we, should we behind those?
Yes. Do you want to start with the instructional block or you want me to start? I'll start.
Okay.
Just because my, I think are a little simpler. And so we're looking at fortifying the alternative education program, mentioned that that would be staff, that would be teachers. So an average teacher costs us about $120,000 as a total package. And so we'd be looking at adding one special education teacher to Back Bay. We'd be adding one to Montevista. So that's about a $240,000-ish dollar investment. Additionally, one thing I failed to mention that I should highlight is that we are considering and asking for support for a social worker and/or social work support for the alternative education setting. However, we do have grant funds to support that. So that would be an offset. We're just looking for your support in being able to provide that. Additionally, when we look at campus safety facilitators, over the last probably 14 to 16 months, we've added five. And the cost of a safety facilitator is about $80,000-ish dollars all in?
Yes.
Yeah. I say all in because, you know, it just depends on who we hire. And then we would just be looking at potentially continuing to maintain our floater program. We hired three safety facilitators who basically float around. They're our substitute pool. They're awesome. And anytime we have somebody who's out, we are able to plug holes. And then when we have some things that we know could be concerning at a site, we send extra support there.
So we're adding how many more? Are you recommending four more?
Mm-hmm.
That's about 80 apiece?
Uh-huh.
For the Title I instructional block, we believe that with five additional teachers, we'd be able to create more play in the assignment of specialists across all sites. And that cost is estimated to be $625,000. In special education, we believe with the addition of two teacher experts, we'd be able to create some professional development experiences and that costs around $300,000.
And then for information technology, that's kind of a, we have a couple items there. We've got a restructure. We think that may impact to FTE, but we believe we can offset that. And then active camera monitoring, which we're going to be doing. We think we might need some, some technical support in that area just because of the way that the system works. So there may be one person there, but we're not, we're, we're still looking at that. But we want that as a, that may need, may need that as a contingency.
How much was that?
So that's, that'd be a total of three FTE at about $385,000, but we believe all that would be offset by three FTE coming off. And that would be in the area of information technology.
So neutral?
Sorry.
Cost neutral?
Yes, cost neutral.
And then in terms of special education support, just to clarify as well.
The $600,000?
I just want to make sure.
So 300?
It's 300.
What was the $600,000?
For the instructional block for Title I schools. So that would be additional specialists.
Five additional.
Udi, science, PE.
Are we getting any extra special ed at CDM or?
It's not the special ed program. So that's, that's completely different. And that doesn't necessarily show up on here because it's a programmatic answer to student needs. So there could be changes to this CDM special ed program, but Sarah would have the most information on changes by site of students and teacher positions.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about Prop 28 funding and supplanting challenges. So the district is really, benefits greatly. We, you support the arts and so it's funded very well. We spend millions of dollars on, on art, art and music kind of programs. And now that we have Prop 28 coming online, Prop 28 is going to provide another $2.6 million. But however, that has to go on top of what we're currently doing due to supplanting rules that we were hoping to get some flexibility on. But so far, we don't think we have a whole lot of flexibility. So on top of our, our current program of about $9 million, we're going to add another $2.6 million out of Prop 28. And that has to be over and above what we're currently doing. And so there's some challenges there in terms of adding all that program and how we do that. And so we just want to make you aware of the challenges associated with Prop 28. And I don't know if Socorro or Carrie want to add any, any color to that?
Well, I can say at the elementary level, as a reminder, that these are per-site allocations and that the staffing numbers, and again, there's a, it's a per-people allocation that is weighted on unduplicated count students. So every site receives a different amount of money. And that amount of money ranges from mid-30s to low-60s and everywhere in between. And we know that's not enough to fund a teacher. So we will be looking for flexibility to combine funding across sites to allow us to have more creative spending plans to be able to add this up. And that we know we'll have to match some already existing investments at sites. And so incorporating that and coming forward with a district plan and a district standard that we believe all sites will benefit from would probably, will probably require some district investment to level it off. Just the way it's given by student, it makes it very awkward. So I don't know that that would be a full position, but I do imagine we'll need additional funding to round it off.
And in secondary, our Prop 28 funding is, is identified and funded in the same manner that you heard Socorro describe. However, in secondary, we do have an opportunity to be able to create pieces of a program that would be new. And so we are looking for your support just in terms of flexibility and understanding in terms of the programs that would be developed in our secondary schools. Because again, the money is in varies depending on the site. You have some sites that got a little bit of money and some sites that got a lot of money. However, we are trying to make investments that match best what their pathways could be in art and where their communities have led us to understand what they represent. So we're just looking for your support and flexibility in rounding that out.
So, so since we, since we don't have an arts coordinator, do you see any value in possibly adding an extra teacher on special assignment that could kind of help coordinate these efforts in order to maximize what we can get out of, you know, coordinating funding for this and just our arts programs, VAP programs in general?
I think our probably best opportunity there is to establish a vision and plan for both, for both elementary and secondary in terms of the Prop 28. Our, our desire and plans after listening to you, to hear what you're interested in, what the sites need, creating a plan with our current directors and determining at that time probably what comes out of that planning session, vision, to determine who needs to lift that work forward, to figure out whether or not we have the staff to move on that plan or if we need to fortify a staff to determine if we need to do something different.
And as Jeff mentioned, I mean, we have a $9 million investment in the arts currently. And so it has been integrated into our directors in ed services. The work they do does include VAPA and it's always been part of our support in terms of curriculum and instruction. It's now thinking about this new complexity of these dollars and how sites will choose to spend it and how we kind of, again, create, continue on our path of a district standard as well as allow these individual decisions. So when that kind of does settle, then I think we'll be able to have a more comprehensive ask from the board in terms of supporting our work.
Any other thoughts on, on this? Okay. All right, so let's talk about transitional kindergarten. And so this is, as you recall, we, we received no funding for this program simply by virtue that we're a community-funded district. And so currently we're putting in $5.3 million. And we're in the, I don't know, with the, we've gone through the second tranche of birth dates. And so the question here is, we, at, we're currently at 5.3 million. We will go to eight and a half million at full implementation. That's just staffing, doesn't include any facilities, facilities, about 15 million, that kind of thing, maybe more depending on how far we want to go. And so the, the real question to you, to the board is, that we want to hear is, is what would be your guidance on kinder? Full implementation or where on that spectrum of, of implementation do you want us to be?
What does full implementation include? Like, does that include making sure that all of our classrooms that TK is in, have the bathroom specific? What are the details?
Other districts, for example, have limited how, how old or young they're going to take students, how many schools have the program, how many, how many rooms are, so they've kind of capped it, especially because we're not getting any funding for this. This is completely a board decision investment. That's what some districts have done. So we want to make you aware of that. So we can either keep going full bore or we can start talking some limitations. Every classroom, we're going to have to be in the realm-ish of the appropriate instructional environment. Sometimes that's new bathrooms, sometimes it's not. It really depends on a site-by-site basis. But we try and make them all, you know, quality learning environments for the children in them. So, but there have been districts, I think even in Orange County, who have stopped and, you know, they, they didn't keep expanding. They stopped at the number they could afford and decided this will be it. And then we'll kind of figure that out.
So full implementation is the birth dates that's allowable and then at all schools?
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm going to, my take is, I know we're not getting the funding from it, but I'd like to be able to offer that because I think that it's, it's just a benefit of our community. I don't want to limit one community over the next from having their TK at their, at their site, at their local neighborhood school. Nor do I want to say, well, I know that the state says we could, but we've decided not to. So I, I think just offering that opportunity, and I do think our TK programs are excellent, excellent ways for them to even excel more in kindergarten. So I would like to say full implementation, even though we know that we don't get the funding and hopefully that will change with our advocacy.
I would just add, I also would love full implementation one day, but also I realize all the budget constraints that we have, especially with the state budget. So I would just prefer that we begin with our Title I schools and make sure that all those students are served in Title I because education is the great equalizer. And we know in our wealthier neighborhoods, they'll be able to find an alternative. But in our Title I's, they won't. So they might be in low-quality care during the day. And so we can avoid that. But then yes, if we have the money, expand everywhere, but begin where the highest need and the most impact would be, and that would be Title I.
One thing I think though is that I think the community expects that by 2025, we'll take everyone. So I think we've kind of communicated that a lot to our out there. We didn't say that, I didn't know that we can actually limit.
I think that could be then.
Yeah. So, because I think that's, that's one thing that will be difficult to communicate if that's what the board decides.
Or is it, I don't think I think too, but is it possible to have it staggered by need? So I know there were some, I think, is it 10 or 12 that you have to have a minimum of to have a classroom? If there's some sites that have for this, like four-year-old by September 1st for 2025, 26, if there's, you know, one school that has a need for three classrooms versus one that would maybe one, I think kind of like those numbers, I don't know. There's a good way to predict that if we will get birth rates. I don't know, but I think being able to assess what the need is.
I would, I would love if we could do this by EDI data. We have the EDI data and we know where the kids are coming in most ready to learn. It's not, it doesn't always lay out like you'd expect from a socioeconomic perspective. So I think that would be a smart way to do it if we had to prioritize something is to use what we know. And maybe we have one classroom or two classrooms, but, but using what we already know where students are coming in less ready to learn.
I personally think that we should offer it for all, all the, all of the schools in our district because, and make it a priority of the board to do so and find the money for it because a lot of, you know, our, where, where, the zone that I come from, we give a lot to the, the general pot. And I think it'd be an expectation that we should also include them in all, in the services for ETK, especially since it is, it's been a popular program. And I don't think that we need to, you know, exclude anyone. It should be, you know, an opt-in for all.
And I, and I agree with that, especially when literacy is one of our number one priorities as a board. It's important to have that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That's good. We have our director of maintenance and maintenance here. What is your name? He's going to cover this slide for us.
All right, good afternoon. I'm just going to jump right into this one because there's quite a bit on this slide. When we're looking at our facility maintenance needs over the course of the next 20 years, we're in between modernization cycles. We still have to be keeping up on our buildings, maintaining them in good repair. Where we currently sit is we have about $200 million or so maintenance backlog. And what that means is most of our major systems up to $200 million. They've met their life expectancy and they're, in the condition that they're ready to be replaced or it's justifiable. Like pretty much every school district in the state, the needs far outweigh the ability to pay for those. So we have to be strategic in how we select and prioritize projects. And one way that we do this, and it's an industry standard number, and more school districts are starting to adopt this, is the use of the facility condition index. Now what this is, is it's a simple division of what your current replacement need is divided by the current replacement value for those buildings. This gives you a ratio for Newport Mesa, it's 15.2%, which is by industry standards in good condition. But as we continue to age and our facilities continue to age, this number is going to change over time. So if we did do nothing, for example, our facility condition index would increase quite rapidly. Where we sit currently with our budget for maintenance departments, the statutory limit or minimum is 3% of general fund expenditures. We have a very astute community and they asked us to increase that contribution to 4% to protect their investment in our schools. And based off of our current second interim expenditures, that would give us a total routine restricted maintenance budget of about $17.5 million. This is inclusive of all maintenance salaries, equipment, supplies, contracts for incidental repairs and deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance being the scope of this one because it's kind of the big fish. At 4%, we'd have about $5.5 million for deferred maintenance. And it's not nearly enough to keep up with our buildings, even at, even at the increase rate of 4%. Where we're currently funded in this fiscal year is about 7.71% for routine restricted maintenance. That's a total of about $31.5 million. And above that, you can see how that breaks down with employee salaries and benefits, all of our supplies and services, and leaves about $18.5 million for deferred maintenance. You can see in the table to the right, we use that number to see if we continue what our current investment is in maintenance. How would this do for the next 20 years? And this is linear. It is not adjusted for inflation and, and cost escalations. As our district moves forward, our expenditures will also increase with inflation as will construction costs. So I'm just doing this simply in today's dollars to see what it would look like if it were just a snapshot in today's dollars. You can see even at this rate, by 2039, we, we move up from the green to the yellow. And so what this means is in 15 years, everything that we're doing today, a lot of those things are going to start coming up again for replacement. So we're doing pretty good as far as keeping up on our maintenance responsibilities. But once we hit that 2039, it'll get the 15-year mark, more assets will be coming up for renewal on top of the ones that are already planned for renewal. If you look at the bar graph to the left, you see the orange line is, is what our annual renewal rate is. And you can see a sharp tick right there at 2039. renewal rate is, and you can see a sharp tick right there at 2039. The gray bar is what our Facility Condition Index score is if we are continuing to invest in maintenance in the current dollar amount, between 7% and 8% routine restricted. And you can see, for the most part, it's pretty flat, which is great. It means we're keeping our facilities in good repair, we're replacing equipment before it fails. But once we hit that 2039, it does increase. The good news is, we did this at the same time we're doing our facilities master plan. And so often, the two go together, and as we continue to invest in our facilities program and modernization, that will also help keep our Facility Index score down. It also helps so we can strategize and prioritize projects, so we're not paying for them twice, or we're not going to do major maintenance replacement for a building that's probably not going to survive through the, make a facility master plan.
So the ask here is, are you, are you good with us funding the routine restricted maintenance account over and above the 4% minimum, which you set some time ago?
That's a big ask. So with that, I mean, we have this in, going side-by-side with the facilities master plan, so if we do increase, and this is the question, if we do increase, we won't be, will we not be spending that money on something that might be changed in the next 10 years?
So we would definitely be looking at those opportunities. Brian Litterman and I were actually having a discussion in the lobby earlier today, and we were talking about that very thing. There could be some investment in a facilities project, for example, that covers the deferred maintenance cost. And so, like I said, we didn't, we wouldn't want to double-dip, but there could be some opportunity. One of the biggest challenges that we have is underground utilities. As they age, it's really hard to do that as a maintenance project. And it's usually better in combination with a large facilities project for a modernization. And those underground utilities do make up a chunk of this number, so there would be some opportunity, I think, for sharing, I guess you could say.
And then deferred maintenance, we just started doing a lot more deferred maintenance over the course of the last four years, you would have to say, or two years. And so there is deferred, deferred, deferred maintenance, if I could say that, that we just haven't gotten to. So that would be the need for the increase as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments?
That was my spin-off, because we didn't do a lot of deferred maintenance for multiple , maybe a decade. So we'll catch up, I think, if we have our facilities upgrades.
Okay. All right, so this is the most important time. The most important slide is to hear from you about what you believe the priority should be. So when we leave this meeting, I'm going to go back and with, with these folks here and Julian, say, all right, this is the direction we got from the board. We need to build the budget appropriately and accordingly. So, open forum. I got a, I got a pen here and ready to write.
Trustees, have a question.
I'll go first. I like the increases recommended to the staff focus. That all seems fine, I mean, and dollar-wise, compared to dollar-wise on other things and smaller.
Yay! We're in cheap days.
An easy to say, yeah. Keep the way to increase outcomes. And that's one of our, it links directly to our priority. Universal transitional kinder, I like to fund that for all, because I think public education is for all, regardless of income. So I would like to fund that. And then the increasing in deferred maintenance, I mean, the thing is, is if we don't fund deferred maintenance, things are going to bite us at a time when we need it desperately. Like our pool at Corona Del Mar this past year, the, what was it, heater, the filter, or something like that? And we couldn't figure, you know, that was unexpected, and, but it was, you know, past its useful life. So I'd like to have my cake and eat it too, for all those. And I guess it would be, hey, can we afford all that? And if not, let us know.
Yeah, under current conditions, yes.
Current condition is good. Anyone else? So, actually, that's it. So, under current conditions, everything that you've mentioned can totally be covered. So there's no need to prioritize the TK, because we have the money. So it's really not a priority discussion. It's a, everything you mentioned is okay, so we don't have to prioritize or rank order anything.
Well, if there were other things you wanted us to do, for example, you know, hold at 5.3 million for TK, then there's an extra 3 million that could be used elsewhere, perhaps to accelerate facility projects or those kinds of things. So that's really the give and take here. Or if there's other program you want us to look at.
Okay, so how does this, how, because, you know, again, the key term is current. Let's say, as we know, the government's budget is facing some huge deficits. And again, let's say they come and knock on our door and say, hey, we want, we're going to use our deferral power. How will that affect what we are proving, what the direction we're giving you today?
Cash deferrals won't be a problem. You have the reserves, be able to handle.
We have the reserves, okay.
The, any kind of cash deferral that may go, come our way.
Okay, so that's good to know, because as you mentioned earlier, the deferrals may be coming our way. Just want to make sure that we are, we have enough in our reserves to handle it and still finance.
So another question. So in the current budget and everything that you've presented with the maintenance and construction and things, is there the money to address, like what the Anderson parents are asking about their site? Is that included in this money, or is that not factored into what we have talked about?
So what we talked about here is mostly is program. And so when we talk about the facility issue, that's something that, yeah, we'd have to talk about. Certainly, yeah, there's, there's 14 million to deal with that now, right? But then what does that do to other projects, that kind of thing? So we'd want to have an expansive conversation about that. If that's something that we want to put in front of the line, then, then we want to show you the line, how that impacts the line.
So if we wanted to, for instance, use that money to deal with that, that would mean that our other construction projects would have to be put down lower on the list?
Correct.
If we're not willing to move money from, like, TK?
Yes.
Or somewhere else?
Yes. And that really is the, the, I don't know, maybe tension's not the right word, but the give and take for us, because we're community-funded, we do fund a lot of our facilities out of the general fund, which is unlike other districts. Other districts, they do it with the GO bond. So air conditioning, maintenance, it's all GO bond. But we do a lot of that through our general fund currently.
Well, that's what I think. For me, if we're focusing on what I think our priority is, which is educating children, I think, you know, it's awesome that we have been able to use our, you know, local revenue for that. But I think, you know, similarly to what Trystee Wagon was saying, I think public education is for everyone, and it shouldn't, that shouldn't be a deterrent when we're considering facilities, when there are options to do bonds, when there's options to do those types of things, particularly related to safety and other concerns. I was wondering too, I know a lot of the, we don't rely on the state like normal districts do, and I was wondering if there's any kind of localized advocacy perhaps, or changes that we can make? I know one of the things that I've heard from some sites is, you know, there's universal meals, they're not necessarily the best quality across the state. Is there a way that that's more for anticipated and then opted-in if people want it? I know one of the things we've talked about in our joint cities meeting is the SB 1383 by 2025, that's about edible food recovery and about the organics to landfills. So if there's a need or an opportunity for us as trustees to talk to our fellow elected people at different levels in the state, I mean, that could be, I know the cafeteria fund is one of our big, big items, and if maybe, like, even 10% of that food is just going in the trash right now, because it's not necessarily needed. And I think that could be a huge thing for us to focus on, and perhaps be able to positively impact the budget, I think, in a big way. I was wondering, I know that Dr. Joe mentioned here, but with the increased access and ability to bill Medi-Cal, is that, are we anticipating that perhaps some of those staffing costs or some of the special ed costs would go down in other areas? So would be more net zero?
Net zero is probably too generous, but, but definitely, and a growing program to recapture funds, and thinking about the way we fund a lot of kind of like nurses and other things, and bringing it directly back into the pot. I think that effort is growing. I don't know that it's exactly net zero, but...
But dramatically different than it was even years ago.
Yes, it's very increased, and a specific intent.
And our social workers have been billing and recapturing costs. And the one that we're moving forward with, with your support, that I mentioned, could be grant-funded. Part of that grant is to ensure that we recapture the Medi-Cal billing. So we are trying now to make sure that we're very thoughtful and intentional about making sure our staff is moving in that direction.
One of the things that we heard
Yeah, in Washington.
In DC, the Department of Ed offered to help us. If we struggle to recapture funds, they'll advocate on our behalf, asked us to reach out to them, because they understand that in a budget, in the federal budget where they're talking about cutting money, one thing they can help us with is getting the money that's out there. And they had a couple of examples, and that was one of them. So very, very fruitful conversation with them. We'll take help from the Department of Ed if they're willing to give it.
Okay, great. And then also too, related, just to, I think, planning, do we anticipate that there, I mean, I know across the state, there's declining enrollment in some areas, but if there's, I think one of the things that I was talking about with the TK, like, if the, until the end of 2025, it's all, like, a four-year-old turning five before June is like a full, I mean, that's like a very generous amount. But if we don't necessarily know if the numbers are going down, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I just, I think it's hard to kind of like predict and advance the need, and how many students that would really be. Like, maybe it's not, you know, 150 more, maybe it's 70, you know? So is there a way, like, is that something that we can maybe get a check in, like, once a year, like, here are the current numbers, here's what it's looking like? I know Dr. Sue is really great at doing that, Kathleen.
It's definitely part of our enrollment projections, include TK. We've been expanding canvassing efforts, getting out to communities, and really kind of literally knocking on doors to get a better sense of how many zero-to-threes there are, so we can predict and get them connected to the right services that they might have access to now, before they even get to our preschools. So it's definitely in the works to have the best information possible. And there is a bit of that little magic science that is like our K predictions, that where we are using demographic data and projections that, you know, is usually in the ballpark, but people move, things change, that type of thing. But I think we have a fair idea of who's coming at least next year, and we can definitely keep the board apprised.
Because I was thinking too, related to the state, like, we have certain school, preschools that are funded by the state that are outside of the TK-12 continuum. So just even, like, if there's something at the state level, again, if we could advocate, like, if it covers anyone who is going to be born during this term, then that, the state would take in for that rather than us. So not, not offering it, but having other funding sources or creating kind of more of a, the preschool, the whole continuum that we're looking for more, I think, as a district. So we have our certain state preschools currently. Are there two more that we could add? I mean, I just don't know, I don't think we have it at even all of our Title I schools, if that an opportunity. So I think particularly when we're talking about facilities and space on campuses, if there's an opportunity to increase that, to me, that would make a lot of sense, and that's a portion that we can get from the state.
And it's exciting that there seems to be more money coming in from the TK fund this year. That's great. That's about it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So are we, are you clear on our direction as far as going ahead with this budget?
Clear as a bell.
Okay.
I mean, I did, real quick, I mean, obviously, getting Anderson to the level that the rest of our schools are at, safety-wise, is my top pri, one of my top priorities. And TK also something that's really high on my, on my list.
Can I add that, just hearing all of these priorities, I just am having a hard time, I guess I like how the pie is this big. So unless somehow the pie gets bigger, I just don't see how we're going to meet the needs of all the TK expansion, especially if we're truly going to make a real early childhood education, like, pathway, and really support it, it's probably going to be more than eight, to do it correctly with the facilities that are going to need to be added to it. So again, I just really, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around saying yes, 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 to everything, unless, like, there's a bond. If there's a bond, then yes. But without that, I just physically don't see how we can say yes to all these different elements.
Sure, facilities for TK are not, what's the word?
Title V.
Not Title V.
So, so they don't all have restrooms attached and have the teacher prep areas? That we are looking at, on the schools that we're adding capacity this year, for whatever reason, but TK, we're looking at some of the opportunities to add restrooms to those buildings in permanent construction.
Oh, permanent, so in their relocatables or?
So in, like, if you're looking at California Elementary, where we have our kinder yard, and then TK are being served in the permanent classrooms just to the north, we're looking at potentially adding square footage in the next phase to the permanent construction for immediate restroom access for those students. So there are some opportunities, if you're thinking about the back of the building. I think what's important for TK, we're kind of, you know, we drive a Ford. We're not in a Benz, we're not in a BMW, we're in a Ford, we're meeting the basics. It's not Title V. We're, you know, they're lovely rooms, they, we have restrooms that are for littles, but it's not a model TK classroom, because again, we don't get the state funding. That's not, that's not how we've done it. And so if that's the, and that's not the version we're actually asking for as we expand. But as we modernize, as we do different things, certainly, we step up the classrooms to be, I mean, our, you heard, our buildings are 60 years old. They weren't built for TK standards today, of course. And so they are good learning environments, but they're not the, the absolute standard of what's being asked for now. And we're not required to do that, because we're not giving the funding to do that. So recognizing that, as we move forward, of course, if the board, that, that would change our figure of what we're asking for and all of that. But that isn't kind of where we are. They are good facilities, and it's a great learning experience for people, but it is not the, there are very specific requirements, and we do not meet those.
And I would think that, after spending some time in preschool recently with my children, a lot of the private preschools, they don't, don't meet the standards either. Like, I, yeah.
This is probably a truth.
Yes.
And Lance will tell you, we are driving a Ford. It's a fix, repair daily, right?
But I built you a Ford. Yeah, maybe a 1970's Ford, but. Steady.
Okay. So any further comments from our trustees? Huge thank you to the team. I know how hard you've worked, and thank you all for also spending your time and joining us. At least you'll get, you get to see how we all work, and it's, it's compelling work, it's work that's necessary. And I think this is probably one of the most important meetings of the year, as far as I'm concerned, because it all starts with the money. And then also, you know, for us remembering the importance of where this heads, and it's our board priorities. It starts with kids. So thank you very much. Meeting enjoyed at 12:29.